Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Welcome back. All right. First up, we have Sebastian Wissa for our student report, student council report.
Thank you for having me. To start, I'm just here to update about student life. I'm Sebastian Wissa. I'm a senior at Somers High School and student body president. So to start off with our student life at our school, we had our opening assembly on the first day of school where Mr. Bear highlighted the theme of belonging and talked about new policies surrounding cell phones and lateness at our school. It was a great first day, first assembly to get the day started. We have our spirit week coming up, which is really exciting. Thursday, we're going to kick it off with Senior Seventies Day, where the seniors dress up in seventies gear. Monday's Country versus Country Club Day. Tuesday is Barbie Day, which is the fan favorite this year. Wednesday is White Lie Wednesday. Thursday is Color Wars, and Friday is Somers Gear. On Monday, the 18th, to kick off our spirit week, we're going to have our bonfire celebration out at the high school, where we light a bonfire, listen to music, have some fun. It was great last year. We're excited for it this year. Also, Friday is our pep rally, where we bring the whole student body into the gym, play some games. Teachers are included in the games. It's great to show some spirit and have some fun. Saturday, the 23rd, is our homecoming dance, our second one in a while, and we're really excited. It's going to be disco theme, so we've been planning the decorations and all that. It's going to look really cool, so that's going to be a lot of fun. And finally, we have our club fair on the 27th of September, and that's where we showcase all the clubs at our school for students like freshmen who may not know about clubs and also upperclassmen who may be looking for something new. In the past two weeks since school started, for seniors, we had a lot of senior events, such as Senior Sunrise. The sunrise was absolutely beautiful. We had senior breakfast, which was great, and then we painted our parking spots before school started, which was a lot of fun. Also, before school started, we had a peer leadership hosted their freshman orientation. And also, on that day, when the teachers came in for their first day, we kickstarted this teacher competition that Ms. O'Shea is running at our school for the teachers to have some fun. And it's like they earn points, and they're split into three teams, red, white, and black, red, gray, and black, and they like are competing each other to earn points, like going to school events and like wearing their team t-shirts on Fridays. So we kicked that off by running like fun activities, which was great last Tuesday. For the arts, our fall drama was announced. It's going to be Spelling Bee, and auditions are next week. I say drama in quotes because technically it's a musical. Decided to switch it up this year, so that's really exciting. For athletics, homecoming week is next week, and our homecoming football game is Friday the 22nd, which is always such a great time. Our new boys varsity volleyball team, this is their first season ever, and they won three straight games in the past week, and they're going off a great start. It's a really fun team. A lot of my friends are on that team, and we go to support. It's awesome. Our girls' flag football program, along with head coach Katie DiChiaro, was recently featured on NBC News for their work in advancing the game for female students. This past Saturday, we held our Big Red Cross Country Meet. It was a huge success, over 15 teams, 2,000 athletes, and our girls' team took home first place, which was great to see. For student council, we've been running our snack shack at the football games, which is a lot of fun to volunteer at, and we get to sell food to everyone. And we're also planning for our student council leadership conference, which is a conference we go to every year and participate in with high schools from around New York State. And counseling, to close it all off, we have our high school open house on the 28th. Also, last night was college night, and the counseling team was excited to see a great turnout of students and parents, in addition to seniors and their parents, parents and students of any grade eager about what they were looking forward to, to get the college stuff started, which I'm in the middle of, not a lot of fun, but it's great. This week, counselors are visiting all senior classes to ensure that students who intend to apply to college are prepared. Counseling is also providing students with information on setting up their senior meeting. Senior meetings will run through the fall, again, getting ready for college, all that. Counselors are also visiting grades 11 and 10 classes to explain the registration process for the new digital PSAT. And lastly, Ms. Tracy will be starting to host Naviance and Common App workshops out of the College and Career Center. And next week also starts the fall visitation schedule, when college admissions representatives will be visiting our students for information sessions on a daily basis. So yeah, that's pretty much a whole wrap-up of the school. I kind of went a little quick, but yeah, that's pretty much it. Thank you for having me.
Thanks, Sebastian.
Thanks.
Want to thank Sebastian, too. One of the pieces that our body presidents, they go ahead and they come and welcome back our faculty and staff. So thank you much for coming the week before school officially started to welcome all of our faculty and staff. So thank you, Sebastian. Thank you.
Yeah, you beat me to it. I was going to comment. I got to hear that speech. It was good.
You have to go over to him.
Yeah.
Thanks, Sebastian.
It was a fantastic speech.
So there's a lot going on. How many months have we been open?
Yeah, feels like it.
All right. Great. Thanks. All right. Next up, new to the agenda for this year, the PTA/SEPDA monthly report. So this is something new that I've asked to come up for the PTA and SEPDA and to, you know, share with us some of the, what's going on across the individual schools, what they're working on. I know they're working with a lot of student activities and with a lot of the teachers. So I think it's a good way to kind of get some feedback as far as the other organizations that are instrumental in, you know, helping with our students and teachers and the success here at Somers. Thank you for participating and joining.
Hi, everyone. My name is Rosalyn Galino.
Sorry, one quick second. I'm sorry. Can we make that louder, the fans over here? Or turn that? Basically, it's just, it's a little hard to hear.
Thanks, Paul.
Thanks.
That's the first time in my life I've ever been told I'm hard to hear. My name is Rosalyn Galino. I'm the co-president of council, and I thought PTAs were really busy until I heard everything that was happening in the high school. So I'm going to start with the high school and work back, just for anyone who's, well, I guess for everybody. The way that it works is we have unit divisions within each building, as well as SEPDA, which is our Special Education PTA Association, which works through all of the buildings, and all of those PTAs come together under the umbrella of council. Anybody can join any one of the PTAs. And if at any point you stop listening and get bored, feel free to go on to my School Bucks or Member Hub and join. You do not have to have a student in that school to join. You do not have to have a student who is receiving special needs services in order to join SEPDA. I would give a personal plug for SEPDA, that whether you have a student with special needs or not, the conversations that they have are very important for understanding the overall social, emotional well-being of all of our students. And there's not a single student or adult who doesn't benefit from learning more ways of talking to and with children. In the high school, they will be having their first meeting at 7:00 PM in person this Thursday. That's 9:14 in the library. At the middle school, the sixth-grade social is coming up on the 19th. That will be right after school. Tickets will be on sale on my School Bucks very quickly. And the seventh and eighth grade social dates will soon follow. SMS currently has 103 total members of their PTA. Just checking as we go here. SIS has their birthday party coming up, which Ms. Elkhorn will have fond memories of being taped to the wall. Now we mummify Ms. Belger, so there's always something fun. That's going to be on 10/22. That is a family event now, so that is a family-oriented event for all of our SIS families. And SIS currently has 121 total PTA members. Primrose is always doing something fun. There's a huge incentive and desire to welcome our newest learners and to get everybody integrated as quickly as possible. One thing from last year is the outdoor classroom is well on its way to completion. The turf is in place, the permanent tent is in place. This can be an alternative learning center for some of our students and a way to embrace a different learning style. It's something that can be used by art departments when they're looking at impressionist art and you want to do on plein air painting. It's something that can be used for any kind of classroom when we want to embrace the beauty of nature or focus on a science class directly in there. It's just another alternative way to learn. That's been fully installed, and more work is coming on it. On 9/29 is our back-to-school picnic for our Primrose families. Again, another free family event. That's from 5:00 to 7:00. It will feature some food trucks, as well as some different community organizations, and is a great time for K through 2 to really get to just hang out, be social, and have fun. And Primrose is currently leading the way with 226 total PTA members. So if you have a kid in another school, let's go. And then SEPDA has been working hard on their focus on refreshing recess, which has been changing both outdoor and indoor recess in our younger schools, working on the idea that there are students for whom recess is a fantastic opportunity with no structure. There are students for whom recess can actually be intimidating with no structure, and that our indoor recess especially can sometimes be limited in what can and cannot be done. And more tools and trainings have been coming in to make it easier for there to be more opportunities for all of our students to learn, to play, and to engage in different activities. And SEPDA will be hosting a coffee and conversation on the 28th of September at 10:00 AM and currently has 144 members. Thank you so very much.
Great. Thank you. And then, Rosalyn, actually, really quick, the schedule for the meetings, where can people find those?
All the meetings are listed on the school district-wide calendar. So SMS, I know, has a meeting tomorrow at 9:00 AM. SIS just had one this morning. I don't actually know when SEPDA's next meeting is. Amanda might, but it'll be on the calendar, it may well be the 28th.
Well, the coffee and conversation's the 28th, and the meeting's October 11th.
There you go. I'm glad you're here. Like I said, the high school has their meeting at 7:00, and Primrose has their first meeting on the 18th, this Monday, at 7:00.
Great. Thank you. I know I've had some conversations with some of us on the board about, you know, attending these and being a liaison and kind of just participating in some of the PTA meetings. Not a formal motion, but it'd be great if some of us can rotate in or try to get into that. Can, I don't know, can we ask the communication committee? Dom, you're ahead of that, right? I mean, can we try to get at least one board member in some of these if people want to participate in that or can have the time? It'd be good to start going to those.
Yeah, I think that's something we could talk about. I know the district clearly is very involved with the PTA, and I think that really covers a lot.
Nothing formal right now, but it's, you know, I know some people have said that they wanted to. I know Amanda is involved in it, you know, Heidi, you've been involved in the past and, you know, have advocated for some liaisons to go to those meetings, too. So again, see if there's interest. If, you know, people can make it, great. If they can't, you know, no problem.
I'm a member of SEPDA, so I'll be more than willing to pass along any information back to us if that's what you want.
Great. All right. Next part of the agenda. This is public comment for agenda items. All speakers will promptly identify themselves. A maximum 30-minute period, limited to three minutes per speaker. No district employee or student may be commented upon or identified by situation. Ask a question by public will be referred to your appropriate staff member. Questions, I could read all this here, but ultimately, right now, just ask about the agenda, anything on the agenda specific related to that. Is there anybody for public comment for agenda items?
No.
All right.
Yep. I'll go ahead and take the next piece if that's all right here next. So we've got the central office report. So as Chris, go ahead and we'll kind of log into the screen up here. So we will, this is the first component of our Board and Excellence Report, and so hopefully the board has had an opportunity to take a peek at this, and certainly it's been up on the website. And so, again, we'll have it up here on the screen. So this is the report for the 23-24 school year. Most of, not all, but most of the data does go back to last year, as many times this information is coming out along the years we go along the way. And so as we'd start with this piece in here, I'll just go ahead and start with the front slide there. And so the first component in there is certainly identified as the district's mission statement that you would see here. And so one of the elements that we went through last year was identified as our kind of SCSD 2030, where we went to our PTAs, as they were kind of hosted, as our SEPDA's and everything before, and had community conversations. We met with our student council groups, where at the high school, at the middle school, also every single faculty. And the conversation basically entailed of what are the strengths that we have in our organization, the opportunities, the aspirations, and what are some things we hope we would be pursuing in the future. So that idea, the mission statement came as part of that work, clarifying that. And then on the next page, you will see that I will be speaking a little bit about, kind of about Somers schools here, then momentarily I'll kick it over to the learning office on the professional learning community. So there's just an introduction letter for me to community members. On the piece there that identifies 23-24 about the report, there are six, what we identify as our elements of excellence. In essence, those are the overarching goals that the community has helped establish from the board level, and so 21st century knowledge skills, fiscal stewardship, family and community engagement, global citizenship, professional learning, social, emotional, and physical wellness. So tonight, we'll have a little bit of a time to take a closer look at with the learning office in the area of professional learning. So on that next slide, you will see just against a very basic background, just anybody's coming to look at our school district perhaps is maybe joining and things like that. Four schools, 2,600 students. You'll note later that that is actually for last year's enrollment. The October 1st is the date that typically from the state, they identify your funding mechanism from that time of the year. So our estimate right now is somewhere's around 2,550 children. We'll have that October 1st date, so that will represent in next year's report. This year, we also did try to bring in the teaching staff in there, as well as looking at both our full-time and our part-time members of the Somers family. Again, both of those roles significant, and they have kind of different components in there. And then the overall administrative team, that's with central office, building administration, principals, and assistant principals and directors and such. And then basically, on the last page, before I bring this over to the group, just gives you a general overview, description of the demographics in our school district, from roughly back to 16, 17 to where we are this year. And so approximately 25% of our students self-identify as not white. That number, we believe, based upon our Primrose numbers come up, will be right around that 75 from what we're seeing from our youngest children moving to high school. And then the last component there, you will see, as I mentioned before, the 2,600 for last year is what was identified last October from the State of Education Department from New York. And then we'll be coming forth with this October 1st. We'll have a little bit updated numbers. Anticipation right now is around 2,550 or so. So I'm going to go ahead and hand the next section over. This is our first, again, element of excellence focusing in on the professional learning community. So I'll hand it off to Claire. So thank you, Claire.
Thank you. Thank you, Ray, and to the board for providing this opportunity for me, Claire Comerford, Director of Secondary Learning for 6 through 12, and Liz Turner, my partner in the learning office, UPK25, a Director of Learning, to talk tonight about professional learning throughout the district. Professional learning is vital for all educators. It empowers us to continually grow and adapt, to improve student outcomes, and to meet the ever-changing needs of our students. As part of the Somers Central School District's collective commitments, we desire to be a school district that supports and encourages professional collaboration and learning, to promote students' learning, and we are driven by a sense of continuous improvement. We're extremely appreciative to Ray and the Board of Education for supporting the professional learning needs of our faculty and staff. We're a district of lifelong learners who acknowledge that there's always something new to learn about engaging and helping students to find success in school. We recognize that helping each individual student at a personal level effectively and addressing their academic and social, emotional need requires a collaborative approach. Therefore, we operate as a professional learning community, and we're continuously asking these four questions that drive our academic instruction. What do we want our students to know, be able to do, and to understand? That relates to curriculum and standards. What are we teaching? How do we know what our students know, are able to do, and can understand? We assess. We continuously talk and assess and get a sense of who's learning what. And then the next question, what do we do when students don't know, aren't able to do, and can't understand? Then we provide the supports needed for all students to do so. And then the final question in our professional learning community conversations, what do we do when they already know, are already able to do, and already understand? And how can we provide enrichment and extension opportunities for those students? So in order to effectively answer these questions and more, the learning office engages all stakeholders in the learning process throughout the year. We're happy to report an increase of offerings and participation for teaching assistants, aides, clerical workers, monitors, bus drivers, and food service workers in the 22-23 school year, acknowledging that all of our members are important to the success of all of our students. We also provide learning for families and community members so that they can also collaborate to support all of our students. If we move on to, you know, we talk a little bit about our retention rate in Somers. It's very impressive comparatively. We're very proud of our retention rate. It's holding strong at 98% for 22 and 23 school years. The majority of our teachers have been with us between 10 and 29 years. This enables us to foster strong partnerships and invest in our amazing teachers so that we can work with them and anticipate them staying with us for the long term. 97% of our teachers have at least one master's degree. Many have more, and we have some doctors on our faculty as well. Last year, the average hours that all faculty members participated in professional learning was 64. 64 hours each member of the faculty engaged in professional learning. Our goal over the past several years in the learning office has been to increase voice, choice, and agency regarding professional learning for all of our stakeholders. To meet this goal, it's imperative that we hear directly from our colleagues what they need to effectively support students. So that feedback, along with others, helps drive what we offer here in the district for professional learning. We get teacher feedback from multiple surveys multiple times throughout the year. Focus group that the learning office conducts at the end of each year, meeting multiple times over multiple days in each of the buildings, inviting teachers to come and share what needs of support they have. Also, any postlearn, any learning opportunity has a post-learning feedback forum to ask, what else do you need? How did this meet your needs? What else can we do to help you? We also pay attention to student learning, student feedback from learning data, what are the students showing and demonstrating that teachers might need support with, and then also student focus groups, depending on the age level. Also, parent feedback. We want to hear what parents need, what learning opportunities does the community and parents need, and so we ask that through surveys, through committee work, and other meetings. And then finally, all the learning opportunities that we provide here in Somers are aligned to the New York State curriculum standards, to the Somers Central School District mission, vision, and collective commitments. They're aligned to that expressed need that we know because we continuously ask what is needed, and continuously focused on increasing student engagement. And then finally, as any teacher will tell you, the most practical, you know, the best professional learning is professional learning is practical and can be used the next day. And so we really try to align that, having our teachers teach our teachers and provide them with practical tools, experiences, and strategies that can be used the next day to help students throughout the year. And then I'll turn it over to Liz, who's going to talk a little bit more in detail about some of those opportunities.
Thank you so much. So I will just add to what Claire was sharing. The objective of our district professional learning experiences is to be ongoing, excuse me, and available to all of our faculty and staff members, so we can all work collectively to support students' growth and move things in the right direction. And when I say all faculty and staff, that includes the teachers, the support staff members, the administrative teams. So all the experiences are designed each year to further curriculum development, to align to state standards. Sometimes there's change in standards, so we need to make adjustments. We'll work on things like incorporating technology use, building common informative assessments, or developing certain content areas. The experience is always responsive to teachers' expressed need or to students' needs, and is also responsive to our student learning data and our student performance, so that there's alignment there. There are also learning experiences at times that are aligned to some of our new initiatives. An example has been our alignment and work with the International Baccalaureate Work, the Middle Years Workshops. And when teachers go to these learning sessions, the expectation, like with any of the learning sessions, is if you're gaining knowledge, your job is to then go back and turnkey, share that knowledge, teach others that you work with your colleagues and peers, so that that knowledge spreads and everyone can learn from that investment. As I mentioned before, the professional learning is aligned to teacher and student needs. And a great example of that, which I'm happy to share about tonight, is our learning around the science of reading and best literacy practices in grades K through 8. This learning actually began last year, and in the springtime last year, we brought a committee together of K-12 teachers, administrators, and we joined together to collectively take stock of our practices in reading, our programs, student performance across K through 8. And we saw where there were strengths, where there was areas in need of support, where collectively we had questions and wanted to learn more. And we saw where we can continue to grow when you look through that lens of the science of reading. So that committee information and the insights were compiled and summarized, and they were shared with a consultancy group, and that consultancy group is PLC Associates. This is a consultancy group that we've actually partnered with this past school year. We began the work, they supported us in learning about the digital learning and assessment tool iXL. But in this lens, we're partnering with two of their literacy experts, who are very knowledgeable educators. They have experience in aligning curriculum and best practices to the science of reading. They will provide professional learning, designed to build that foundational knowledge. And they also are great in supporting schools in implementing high-quality literacy materials. So it's exciting work. We designed a two-year partnership with PLC Associates for this work, where our goals K through 8 are for our teachers to demonstrate understandings of science of reading and best practices, practices, excuse me, in literacy instruction K-8, to take a look at high-quality Tier 1 classroom-level instruction, general for all students, based on the science of reading and best practices, and to also help us take a look at those Tier 2 and 3, a little more specialized intervention programs and services that we're providing, and making sure that those approaches as well are aligned to the science of reading. So over the course of two years, this partnership will consist of 15 days onsite to work with both consultants, to give us feedback and observation on classroom practice, to help us align, and to coach us. There's 36 days of onsite professional learning sessions across the buildings K through 8, where we'll also do some examination of materials, and about 87 hours of virtual team meeting time and coaching with these consultants, and 24 touch-based sessions that offer us planning and reflection all along the way these two years. So it's very comprehensive. We're very excited about this. We're very thankful for the opportunity, where we can really focus our efforts here, and it's directly aligned with where we see student needs. So it's exciting work. As I mentioned before, PLC Associates has guided our use, excuse me, of the online and digital learning tool and assessment tool iXL. We found this tool has become very effective for helping us to measure and monitor students' learning and progress in ELA and math especially. And it's just, it's an additional component that helps teachers and teams tailor instruction for small group instruction, personalize for individual students. So PLC Associates helped guide us through that work. They helped us with data analysis and implementation in classrooms last year, and we are going to continue that work for a second year with them to help us with the iXL tool. PLC Associates also assists us, as Claire mentioned earlier, with capturing teacher feedback on professional learning. They do that through surveying, and this is just an additional way to help us tailor that professional learning calendar as we plan for the year ahead. So we will continue and expand on that partnership. In addition to these planned experiences, we also plan for in-service courses for our teachers to design. They are designed by teachers. They are for teachers to come together to dig deeper into areas of either content interests that teachers would like to develop, or it's an expressed student need or teacher need. Some of these topics this past school year included evidence-based grading, executive functioning to support students across their school day, technology integration, so they are relevant, timely, and it's teachers, helping teachers, and spreading that knowledge that they've gained. So we allot for those each year as well. I'll talk about the summer for a moment. Even though school is closed, it's an active learning time and planning time here in the district. Our teachers spend a great deal of time coming together in the summer. They invest in professional learning, and these investments are to help make improvements to our practice and our curriculum. So an important event that takes place in the summer, and each summer, is our Leadership Summit. That is when our teacher leaders gather together, kindergarten through the high school year. That is when our teacher leaders gather together, kindergarten through the high school years, to ensure that there's K-12 alignment in our professional learning and our goals for the school year ahead. This past August, our teacher leaders, it was approximately 71 leaders that we had come together from the schools, where we looked at strengths in our teams, where we have opportunities for growth, and it's all related to our professional learning communities. The individuals were able to reflect on their own leadership skills and also team leadership skills when they spoke together about how they could strengthen their work in the buildings, and they drafted their own team goals, alignment with the district goals and the building-level goals, to make sure that there's always cross-building, interdisciplinary connections. And these conversations, these collaborations are very important for us to have right from the get-go because this sets the scene for the rest of the school year. So it's great to have these conversations in August when teachers can foster that further K-12 alignment. We also have summer curriculum work that takes place in the summer across all of the buildings. This is a great amount of work that takes place in all of our buildings. It's either completed in teacher teams, partnerships, sometimes individuals, but more teams coming together. And this is where teachers propose work to create or align curriculum materials. They want to make sure that what they are creating is aligned and actually reflective of the student experience and the student needs that they have in their particular content area or that grade level. This summer, we had 112 proposals that we approved, representation across all four schools, and it represented about 42% of our faculty that came together to do this work, which we are proud of. A little over 1,700 hours of work completed this summer to influence our curriculum mapping and experience for our students, and it was across all subject areas. Some examples that came forward this summer were further aligning practices across the core content areas, math, ELA, science, social studies, some work around developing programs further, such as our world language work at SIS, content literacy work at the middle school level, things that can be incorporated during the win period, work with our IB programming, embedded honors, work by our special education department. So you can see, it runs the gamut of all areas, buildings, and our grade levels, and a lot of valuable work that's done in the summer. So in addition to that summer curriculum work, the teachers are also given an opportunity to design learning sessions for their colleagues, and we do this in the form of the Tusker U Faculty Focus. These sessions respond to expressed needs. They're focused on increasing student engagement. The sessions are really well-received. They encourage cross-subject and grade and building collaboration. We had 242 participants this summer. There were 17 different sessions that were offered, and representation from all the schools and for different levels and for different needs. And once again, feedback was positive in conjunction to the objectives of those learning sessions. And then one more summer component I just want to highlight is our Tusker U Student Focus. This is a fun one. This is, this experience allows our teachers and our students to connect during the summer. It's great because teachers are designing both fun and meaningful learning activities, designed for different developmental levels, different topics, to meet the needs of our students and the interests of our students. It was great to see we had 73 students participate this summer in those sessions. Had a lot of fun, learned along the way, and parent and student feedback they shared with us was that parents and students are appreciative of the teachers sharing their interests and their passions and making those memorable experiences. So we're also very proud and grateful that we get to offer those sessions as well during the summertime. So a lot goes on in the summer.
Thank you, Liz. I'll just jump in to, I'll just jump in to talk about the last piece there, which is the Tusker U Family Focus. So again, all of this is under the umbrella of providing learning for all stakeholders, and that includes families and community. And so throughout the year, the Learning Office, we organize and support and sometimes facilitate learning opportunities for families and the community. And so this year, coming up, look out for, on October 5th, we're having our Second Annual English as a New Language Family Information Night. So we come together to welcome families and provide information and support for families who, English is a new language for those students, excuse me. Also, we will be re-engaging the entire community on recommitting to the mission value and collective commitments. So last year, Ray and the team went around to gather community feedback from everybody in different forums, PTAs, et cetera, and then that has been reflected in the new goals set forth by the Board of Education this year. And this year, the same venues will be used to, as informational and recommitting to those mission, vision, and collective commitments that were gathered and formalized last year. And then also every year, we have our Annual Social Emotional Wellness Summit, and so that will happen again this year, helping, you know, strengthening that parent, that family home, the family-school connection, and coming together to support all the needs of our students as well. At every single one of those, and further, we ask continuously, what do you want to learn about? And we tailor those learning opportunities towards those responses. So if there's, if there is something that we feel that needs an informational night, we're happy to provide that as the forum for which to help build that connection and sharing of information.
Thanks, Liz. Thank you, Claire, very much. Thank you. So as the board can see, that was the kind of our first element of excellence as we move forward. Lots of information in there, and it's not even the entire piece, as they mentioned, and the general part is to increase our learning opportunities for certainly our faculty and our staff and community and everybody involved in the Somers School District. And again, tying that tie back to what are the intents, the objectives of those areas, and getting some feedback on how do we move that forward. So not sure if there's any other questions for me or anything, but thank you again to the Learning Office. Thank you.
One quick question.
Oh, yes.
Sorry. Just with the informational sessions for parents.
Yes.
And collecting feedback on what topics parents want to hear about. Are there surveys that are going to be coming out, or is there a particular email address parents should reach out to, to express what they're interested in hearing about?
So I believe typically that when they kind of go through the year, the last information there, and then they'll close the year, and then that's what builds the calendar for the subsequent year. If I'm right, they're kind of building that as we're moving forward. So anything else, Claire, sorry about that. So one of the pieces that as Claire comes forward is that idea about give and take, back and forth. So it could be, the E and L is one of those pieces, support those learners that came up very clearly, and we're doing that again, so.
And I would just say, if there is a need, please just feel free to email Liz or me. You can find our email addresses on the website under the Learning Office. We're happy to receive those and compile those with all the other data we have.
Thanks, Liz.
Thank you.
Thank you, then.
All right, no other questions. Central report. All right, next up, we have the Committees and Liaison Reports by Committee Chairs. Who want to go first?
I'll just recap that. We are, just set some provisional dates for the committees going forward. So they're going to be starting in the next few weeks. So we don't have any specific committees as far as yet, but I think Heidi, you might have something from Westchester Funtanum or no?
Yeah, I do. Yeah, we had a Westchester Funtanum Board of Directors meeting last week. They have a bunch of things coming up, and a couple of things we just talked through is what offerings do they have to support our local boards and compare, and how does that differ from New York State School Board Association? And we talked through a bit of advocacy, the advocacy stuff too. I know last year, we had kind of worked through the whole resolutions process, which was lengthy, and then took that to the New York State School Board Association Business Meeting. I know this year, I'm not able to go to the business meeting. I don't know if anybody else is interested. It's October 16th. If we were going to do that, I have the worksheets that show that information about those resolutions. But the local advocacy meetings, they do a lot locally that we can get involved in later in the year in terms of the issues that affect our school districts, you know, in this region more. Couple of things they have coming up. They're offering roundtables this year. Some are in-person and some are going to be online. They're really trying to push the in-person ones because it helps really people connect with other school board members. So this Thursday, October 12th, from 6:30 to 9:00 at White Plains, down in White Plains at the Education House there, they are having a roundtable. So if you're interested in that, you can let Nancy know because you sign up through the District Clerk, and the topic is on progress and process.
Sorry, did you say it was October 12th or September 12th?
It's October 12th. Not this week. Sorry. October 12th. Do you have a time coming up? So I have all the information on it, and you can watch your emails too because you should, everybody should be getting the emails. But these are really good opportunities to sort of network and hear, bounce ideas off of other school boards and hear what other school districts are doing. All kinds of topics. They have board committees, diversity, equity, inclusion, curriculum, Board of Ed teamwork, community engagement, fiscal oversight, so different topics at the different tables. So that might be a great thing for us to send at least one board member to, maybe a couple, so we can talk about that. And then there's a calendar, if you go on their school website, there's just a calendar of all the different events and things that are, that they have coming up. But I think that's the next one that's coming up.
Thank you, Heidi. That was a lot. Anybody else? I know Hordit has something coming up, so I guess everything, no real updates other than everything's on the calendar for right now. One of the, so there is, you know, a couple of our committees, so the Planning Committee, Communication Committee, I think there's some, you know, things aligned to that. Two weeks we have a meeting. Can we, for the October 10th, though, a couple of other committees, can we put together just the goals for the year for each one of those committees and present that to the group?
Yeah. Plan is October 3rd.
Yeah, policy, I don't think we'll have met by then either.
No. Not by the...
It's the 23rd.
The 23rd.
October 23rd.
Okay. So after that, then we'll get the policy one, but just kind of what the objectives are, what we're reviewing for this year. And then if there's any, just review your charters too, make sure that there's nothing in there that needs to be adjusted. All right. I think that's something, yeah, I think we're going to have to discuss because it's really, setting the goals for the committee is, is that what we all kind of have to talk about. I mean, I think it's great to come up with some proposals for what we want to come out of the committees.
Sure.
But then we should all just discuss them and probably enhance them.
Yep.
After the first meeting, maybe.
Yeah, so if we can sit down and have that discussion at our individual meetings for the smaller subsets and then bring it back to the table.
Right, right.
I think that's what, right, that's what you...
I think that's what you meant.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just a side note, I do have, Amanda just is capturing some board actions, so we can make sure we follow up on this stuff too, so, and we'll replay those at the end of the meeting. Okay, nothing else from committees. We have the financial reports.
Just had to accept them.
That's it. The board hereby acknowledges the financial reports. Do we need a motion on that or no?
Nope.
Nope.
And then the approval of the minutes from last regular board meeting. Let it be resolved, the Board of Education, having received copy of the minutes of the meeting of 8:15 and 8:29, hereby approves the same.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? All right, board action, personnel consent agenda. Let it be resolved that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, hereby approves the attached personnel agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? CSE, CPSE meeting recommendations. Let it be resolved, the Board of Education have received copies of the recommendations of the meetings as listed in attached memo, hereby approves the same.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? All right, here's the attendance at a conference. Let it be resolved, the Board of Education of the Somers Central School District does hereby approve the request for Board of Education Trustee Amanda Candell to attend the New York State Board of Associations 2023 Board Officers Academy, the Value of Effective Leadership Workshop on October 2nd at a cost of $130.
October 6th, but yeah.
October 6th, thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions for Amanda on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
I think you skipped the business consent agenda.
Did I? It's not important. All right, let it be resolved, going back up to Section C, Business Consent Agenda. Let it be resolved, the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, hereby approves the attached business agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any questions or anything you want to talk about on this one?
Just the, one big thing on the agenda is the contract with our...
I don't think your mic's working.
You have a mic.
Is our contract with Kathy Cutarella to be our Coalition Coordinator for our Drug Free Communities Grant. She's done that for the past five years, and we are just awarded another five years of this grant, so years 6 through 10. So we'll look to continue that partnership with Somers Partners in Prevention.
Just a quick question. That money is coming from a grant?
Yep.
For her?
Yep. Her salary, her contract is all paid for by the grant.
Right, okay.
Now, is there a limit or range of that grant in total dollars that we can expect?
So the grant for the past five years, we've gotten $125,000 each year, and we'll continue to get that now for the next five years.
No, I mean, from the provider point of view, do they set any limit for?
The limit is the $125,000.
Per year?
Per year.
Per year, okay.
Yep.
All right.
Where does the rest of that go?
There's a, we have the student assistance counselors at the high school and the middle school, so part of their, part of their costs are covered by the grant, and then there's some other events that Kathy Cutarella helps coordinate for the, for the district and the community, like the Drug Take Back Day that happens throughout the community. She's involved with that, and some of that money goes from there.
If there's some left over for the year, it rolls over to the next or does that work?
Yep, rolls over to the next, and then we look to put together a plan to spend that in the future. It did get a little hiccup with, right in the middle of COVID, because that was right, our probably second year of the grant, but now, again, like we said, we got through the first five years and we just got approved for years 6 through 10.
So it would be spent towards this, not other?
Correct. Yep.
Great. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Attendance Conference. All right, now we move to public comment. Now it's public comment. All speakers will identify themselves, maximum 30 minutes, limited to three minutes per speaker. Speakers may comment on matters of public interest involving school operations and programs, but may not criticize or personally attack individuals connected to the school district. No district employees, students may be commented upon or identified by name or situation. Questions may be asked by the public, will be referred to the appropriate staff member for reply at a later date and time. Questions requiring investigations will be referred to Superintendent for consideration of later response. All written statements shall be given to the District Clerk. Yeah, I mean, so I'll just say on this too, we did review this too. Any personal stuff that comes up, even if it's your student, we ask not to comment on it. Please do email us. We do want to hear about those. We do respond, address those, and escalate those internally and get them to the right people, but we ask you for here, just to make sure that there's, you know, no other students, no, you know, let's call it crossfire or whatever, but somebody else that's impacted by this, you know, statement in this public forum. We prefer to have that stuff over email. All right, at this time, anybody here for public comment?
I got to raise this up a little bit. Last time I was in this room, it was a gymnasium, but I'm pretty sure even in 1990 it was this hot. I'd like to welcome this wonderful new board we have here, and Dr. Blanch, it's really nice to put a face to all your hard work through our COVID crisis. As a single father of a Somers student, it was nice to know that somebody was watching out for our kids, so really nice job. And my name is Eric Maravich. I am a Somers alumni. I moved here with my family in 1987. I went through primrose, and I graduated Somers High School, okay? I'm here today, and I'm hoping I'm not breaking rules. If I am, somebody can throw something at me at any point in time. I'm here today simply to advocate for my son, okay? We're not going to, I'm not going to tell anybody what his name is. You're not allowed to know. But in my time at Somers... But in my time at Somers, I went through the band program, the musical band program at each school, okay? I was responsible for winning multiple awards on behalf of Somers at many music and jazz competitions up and down the East Coast. And as a result of the fantastic music program that was here in the 90s, I was offered multiple full scholarships to multiple schools in three different nations. Since graduating nearly 25 years ago, I've had a wonderful career playing the saxophone and singing, and it has been very fulfilling and important in spreading love and peace throughout the world. I've had the honor of touring with some of the world's finest musicians and singers, many of whom anyone here in this room tonight would know. I lived nearly three years of my life in Moscow, spreading love and unity through music. We, as musicians, are ambassadors of such. I say all of this because this would not have been possible, again, without the outstandingly competitive music program here at Somers. My son, whose name, again, I will leave out, has been an outstanding prodigy drummer since the age of three. I don't say this as his father. I say this as a professional musician who is astounded by his talent every day. He has had private lessons since the age of six. Since his mother left, I decided that he and I would move back to Somers so that he can have the same musical experience as I did. However, this past year, when I inquired about getting him involved in the school band, I was told by those involved...
Can...
Without mentioning names?
Yeah, try not to be specific to your son. If there's a program or somebody, you want to reference the musical program or band program or something like that, to keep it to that there, please.
No problem, no problem. Anyway, point of the matter, I suppose, is this. I tried to get him enrolled, and he was put on a waiting list. That was never the way the school music program was set up here. In the last 25 years, it's gone from being very competitive to being a sign-up, everybody gets in a sort of program. I'm sorry, I'm just trying to be very careful about what I say, so please bear with me. Because I was not able to get my son into the band, I had to pay nearly $5,500 last year to put him into the School of Rock so that he could achieve and obtain a music education. This is not a bill I, as a single father, should have had to foot, given the outstanding program that has always been here. Last year, he auditioned for Allstate under Maupac's flag, and he was, he achieved an outstanding 28 out of 28, and that went under Maupac's...
Sorry.
...accomplishments...
30 more seconds, all right?
No problem.
Thanks.
...accomplishments and not Somers. Being that it's my understanding that we have a new band director this year, which is pretty exciting stuff, actually, my suggestion, which will cost the board and the school no money, is that we go back to what we set up 25 years ago, and we worked so hard, thousands and thousands of hours, worked so hard to build, which is not a sign-up and get-in program, but the band director listens to anybody that wants to play an instrument, okay? Kids learn from kids. The best kids sit in the first chair. The second-best kids sit in the second chair, and they learn from each other, and they challenge each other, and they, you know, they work to make each other better. I have learned more from my fellow musicians than I have ever learned from a band director, and we had some of the finest band directors here in Somers in the time I was here. Really wonderful. So again, my suggestion is that, and I say this because I really hope...
Proving statement, please.
I really hope that everybody in the room someday gets to hear my son play, because it's inspiring, it's awe-inspiring to listen to, okay? But I want him in a situation where he's learning traditional music. That's the school band. So please just be clear, I don't want preferential treatment for my child. I just want him to get listened to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Nick, I'd like to make a public comment.
Sure. Okay. So thank you for advocating for the school, the band system. I apologize, guys, if this is the hardest thing as men, yeah.
I don't want to do that.
Who, Ife? Ife, you have comment here afterwards, by the way.
He wants to make it as a...
He wants to make a public comment?
Public comment.
Thanks, Paul. Hello? Are you here? Okay. The reason I want to make this public comment is because really it relates to public and my interaction with alumni, and you really spoke something that triggered all this. I have been talking to many alumni, and here I want to make a proposal on behalf of myself as well as alumni, that is, the school district should fund a serious Somers School Alumni Association, okay? We have a lot of alumni actually come back to Somers to work, and I happen to run into them and talk. Unfortunately, I forgot their names. In fact, we can't mention names anyway, but I'm here to propose that because I think it's very, very significant, okay? Maybe in our budget cycle next year, we should put some money aside to do this, okay? Now, what are the purposes? Of course, Alumni Association, the first thing is, there's some activities alumni would do that can be open, but there are some things that to do that were helpful to the district, okay? For example, give feedback, okay, from alumni to the school district, how our students are performing out there and coming back compared with other schools and so on, whatever that feedback, that's very valuable. And then secondly, they can actually suggest into our goal-setting from alumni point of view, okay? Alumni really care about our school and have experience, sometimes have personal experience with teachers and administration and so on, and those are valuable and can help us to set goals, improve...
30 seconds.
Oh, my goodness. All right, I'll cut it short, all right? And like this gentleman suggested, like band activities, many of the things that Alumni Association could help, okay? I wrote it a little small, but anyhow, in the summary, in 10 seconds, I think we actually talked about this in the past, we never really acted, okay? I think through this public comment, I hope some of the alumni will come, follow me to an, you know, add this to this proposal, and we should do it seriously as an activity, as a group, as a force, to support our school district.
Thank you. All right, board comment. Ife, you lost your time.
No, 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 no.
No, 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 you get one, you get one comment on it.
I still have my board time.
You can't maximize it that way, no double dip in here.
I'll let other people talk first, I'll get my three minutes. You cannot deprive my three minutes of four minutes.
One hat here.
Hold you to it.
You're sworn in. Anybody? Tom?
Go ahead.
No, no, I was actually, Alumni Association might be an interesting idea. Other thing I wanted to bring up, you know, with the Communications Committee and...
Yeah, I did. I have a question.
Shield it, move it to the other side of your body, so it's, no, no, don't move your body with it.
Is it on? I don't think your mic is on.
Where am I?
Hello? All right, that's better. Sorry, I lost my voice yesterday, but, yeah, no, I think having an Alumni Association might be a good idea to get people more involved. I know the Communications Committee is going to be meeting in the next two weeks. Also, you know, going to, having one of our members at PTA or SEPTA meetings, I'll put together a schedule to see if, you know, who can get coverage on to, you know, at least get us out there and, you know, be at more events, at least one of us at certain events to be more public and, you know, engage more with the community on a personal basis than just behind a desk.
I just want to, I say this to a lot of people because I know I experienced it, it was mentioned here, but I love our music program and value it, and I think it's a critical part of the education and for all the students. You know, I've always seen how it is really important for our, and it's stressed a lot, and I know Dr. Blanch, every single year I've heard it from you, how important it is for students to be, find something to be involved in. And we have a lot here in Somers, which I think is fantastic. We have sports, we have, we have music, and we do have a ton of music programs. And I think my experience has always been, they're always looking for more, to be involved in, anyone who has time and desire, and there's great value to that, and it's something I'll always support. And I do support, and I see terrific things with it, too.
Okay, I want to comment on the Excellence Report. Personally, I'm very proud of, you know, seeing this kind of Excellence Report as sort of a milestone, yardstick to measure ourselves, and I think our community should be proud of this type of report as well. And I would say the school, the faculty themselves should be also very proud of this report. I want to point out one particular thing that, as you see the numbers, that we have 2,600 students, we have 183 full-time teachers, we have 71 part-time teachers. What these numbers mean? If you take the student body divided by faculty full-time, that means 14.2 per faculty. I am very proud of that number, okay? A teacher only has 14.2 students. And if you add the part-time 71 into it, the number drops to 9.1 or 10, okay, roughly. That is fantastic, okay? And Somers has that, and we should be all proud of it, okay? And of course, we do expect the Somers School show results of that, okay? That's what my comment is all about. When we have these stacks, we want to also, you know, find reports, follow on with good results as we support our school district. And some of the good things already in the report, but we look forward to year after year as we go forward. Okay, thank you.
I'll go last because I'll do the recap, I'll be before you, and then...
Yeah, I just want to bring attention to a loss that our Tusker community had over the weekend, our bus monitor, Greg. He was a good guy. He was my kid's monitor, and I just want to send my deepest condolences out to his family. Also, just to reiterate what, I'm sorry, first, I just want to say that I can attest to Eric's capabilities as a musician. Actually, we went to high school together, so amazing musician. But just wanted to reiterate what Nick had said earlier in regards to sending emails. If you guys have concerns, questions, or have any problems, just make sure we're emailing our Superintendent and our administration, whatever concerns you may have, and then, you know, we could be CC'd on those as well. So just make sure we're doing that when we come up, when we see a problem, if we have concerns or any questions that you have out there.
Excuse me, can I ask you one question? When I email what I'm talking about, am I able to be specific in my email to the board?
Yes, you can do that.
Yes.
I'll make more comment on this in a second, yeah.
All right, I don't have much, just one thing, when we were talking about, like, kind of a sign-up or trying to have liaisons go to some of the different PTA events, reminded me, too, of something we've tried to do sort of in the past and encourage board members for just all the school district events, to try to, so my challenge to all of us, you know, it was, it's a lot easier, definitely, when your kids are in school, and especially hitting the things that your kids are involved in, but I have to be a lot more intentional about it now that mine have graduated. But challenging all of us to take a look at the sport, like each season, take a look at the athletics and the arts and the musicals and all the different opportunities that are out there, and try to get ourselves to sort of one in each area so that we can really have a good picture of everything that's going on in the district, you know, get out there and see it ourselves.
So I was just going to say thank you for the report. I've been so happy with the progress of the Forward in Excellence Report and getting this data. I think it really gives the community a good picture that you guys are making these data-driven decisions, and it's not just out there in the ether. Thank you for the literacy update. I think that's so important because I think that people don't realize how much does go on behind the scenes, especially over the summer. And I love that our curriculum maps are linked into this because our website's not always user-friendly, so I think it's great that it's going to be living in these reports, these live links are going to be living in these reports online. So those are my personal comments for that. As far as the PTA stuff is concerned, I know SEPTA has a, I'm an officer, full disclosure, I'm an officer of SEPTA, a membership chair, and the, the, SEPTA has a board liaison that comes or watches meetings and then gives reports back. So if PTAs wanted to consider something like that for themselves individually, like, it's great that we're having this partnership, though, too. And I think it'll be great if we can rotate, especially at the council meetings, because we see a lot of, all the units come together at those, and even if you can't hit the individual meetings, however they are, hitting those, hitting those council meetings, you get to see all the units at the same time and hear different feedback from all the units at once, so that's just something to consider, because I know everyone's schedules are crazy. So just to recap, I know, let's see, we talked about potentially, I think you were looking into wanting to know the student-teacher ratio in special education specifically?
Yeah, I forgot to mention, yeah.
So we'll have that on the list of going forward. Already spoke about the PTA stuff, informational sessions for parents that may want to, that they may want to consider for going forward from the Learning Office when we have these Tusker U family focuses. You can, if you have any ideas, definitely email Mrs. Commerford or Ms. Turner over at the Learning Office. Heidi's mentioned, this is for the board members, for the Westchester-Putnam School Board Association offerings that are a little different than the New York State School Board Association offerings. They have the local things. I know I prevailed myself of a lot of those last year, and they were great, to just have those discussions with fellow, other board members in other districts to kind of be like, hey, what are you guys hearing, or what, you know, how have you handled this problem? And I know I'll be attending the Leadership Academy, but I'll try to make the one on the 12th, too. We'll see. And then we're going to have, we're gearing up to enter our committees, our subset committees for the board, and Planning Committee, Communications Committees are coming up next month, at the end of this month and next month. So we're going to review our charters for each of those committees, which are online on the board website, I believe, right? And then have, review the charter, discuss it at those meetings, and also come up with goals for the year for those committees to bring back to the board table on the 10th. And then Policy Committee is obviously meeting after that, so maybe for the meeting after that. So that's what I had on recap. Did anyone else have anything else that we wanted to make sure we followed up on, aside from the public comment, which is also down here?
Thank you. Thank you for mentioning that, yeah.
Okay. All right, great. Yeah, thank you again for the professional learning report. That was, good to see all the activity going on, especially in the reading areas and a lot. Looking forward to see kind of that trickle-down effect and how that goes into the report. A couple things here, I have the recordings, I know, Ray and Nancy, we already made a decision. I think for consistency purposes, I think we're just going to, we've decided we're just going to record and present all of our meetings. So this is the public meetings, not the workshop sessions, but all public meetings will be recorded going forward, just so we have a consistent approach to it. recorded going forward, just so we have a consistent approach to it. All right. The other piece of it, the public comment piece of it, it stinks. I'll remind people that it's a meeting held in public, not a public meeting. I apologize, please. It doesn't mean we're not empathetic to a lot of the stuff going on, doesn't mean that we don't want to hear about any situations you have with your kids or things like that. We do want that bubbled up, just due to, again, this is to protect, you know, potentially either your kid or, you know, other ancillary, you know, kids that, you know, do the situations. It's hard to make a judgment whether it's a, you know, not going to have any other impact, and it's a, you know, great story like the music program, or it has something that could impact some other students on that. So, again, I have to do a better job as far as managing the public comment. We will also, you know, try to cut down on some of it, you know, as far as naming employees even good. I know, Ray, you got a compliment on there, you know, as per our policy.
First one.
It's the first one.
Want to take it?
Well, unfortunately, it's going to be the last because I have to stop those going forward.
Thanks, Eric, I appreciate it.
So we got that in on this meeting, but yeah, so it's... Please bear with me, I'm going to make mistakes on it. I want to, you know, my emotions might get in the way on some of them here, but I'll try to be consistent in my approach, but I won't always be successful, so I do ask the community, bear with me on that there. You know, on that there, I do think it's good for us to start joining. You know, we are trying to put more effort and go to the PTA meetings and some other events. We're there. You know, this is public sessions, you can ask us questions. I'm sure, you know, any of us would like to have questions. We could be much more, you know, conversant and, you know, answer any concerns or whatever it might be, but, you know, that's why we're going to these things, to talk, right? So, and this is why the PTA and SEPTA, you know, coming to this, you know, we're trying to get people and us there, go attend those things. It's, you know, more discussion, more, you know, conversation, and, you know, just opens up a little bit more of that communication loop there. That's all I have.
All right, I'll just bring the close here. So again, it's the second week here, so off to, what I'd say, a very, very strong start to the schools with our transportation team, with our maintenance, custodial team, with our front office team, teacher team, everybody really coming. Want to appreciate Harry and the new team in the HR office. We always have movement at this point in time of the year, so be able to get a fully-staffed staff, as you mentioned, with a number of students being supported by the staff, Ife. We're able to fully be staffed, so we're ready to start the school year. One of the pieces I did want to share, just certainly we're here to support and hopefully help make better adjustments as we move forward. We also like to hear in our teachers, in our principals, administrators, and our front office staff, like to hear the good things that are being done. I thought I'd share an email that was sent to me. Actually, this comes from a parent from another school district, just sharing about the school district. So, "I'm a parent, I just want to recognize and congratulate Somers on the best cross-country race ever," and that was this last Saturday. "I've been attending races for the past seven years. Somers ran a safe, prompt, competitive, and friendly course. Congratulations to everyone for guiding, from guiding the cars to parking to the race marshals, and especially to the extremely dedicated medical staff. Again, on that day, if you were there, humid, saw runners who needed help due to the hot and humid weather conditions there. They were careful and calm professionals." And again, well done to our Somers teams and our runners, and as Sebastian said before, to our young ladies who ran and won that race and that meet. So, again, when other community members, not necessarily here directly, but maybe some of our sister or brother schools around us come and they see that and they share that, again, reflect in a positive and tire community, because that event with 2,000 runners, it's not even including all the visitors and everything, with 52 teams, that is basically one of the jewels that we host in cross-country and tracking events. So just wanted to congratulate the entire Somers School District, because there's from administrators to the children, to the volunteers, to the family volunteers, Booster Club, everybody does that, so just wanted to share that out because the collective district had... Was recognized clearly on a wonderful day, so thanks, everybody.
Great. All right, so that's the end of the meeting. Let it be resolved that this regular meeting of the Board of Education be adjourned.
Somers.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Stay in, objections? Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Paul.